We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 9, 2011. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, August 23, 2011, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
I approve item A and B.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions D through F.
I approve the hearing.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Agenda for the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, August 9, 2011.
I approve.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we have one resolution placing special assessments on property in Douglas County.
I approve the agenda.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 9, 2011. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, August 16, 2011. The complete listing is on file in the county clerk comptroller's office. And item C, the exceptions for dot-com.
I approve.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda. Items A through F are a total of six items.
I approve.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? I'm going to change the -- we're going to move to presentations, but I'd like to take -- move to public hearings first before we do the presentations. We have item A, wholesale liquor license for 101 Scott Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, corporate application Francis Yunis at 10965 Marcy Plaza. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I approve.
Please vote. Item B is in addition to the premise license for Charlie's on the Lake at 4150 South 144th, Omaha, 68137. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I approve.
Please vote. We'll move back to presentations. We have one, a PowerPoint presentation on key recommendations to changes in the dot-com interlocal as submitted by the dot-com review task force. And just to give you a little background, as you know, when dot-com started, there was a whole structure set up. And throughout the time, people have looked at this and reviewed it and tried to figure out if we should be doing things differently. And so it came to a point a couple months ago when not only the dot-com board meeting, but the Users Committee and then a meeting up on the third floor, we said, let's put a group together and see if they can come up with recommendations on how we should proceed with this interlocal agreement. I think for what we were trying to do was we were trying to take the existing interlocal agreement that we had and fit what we wanted into that interlocal, and we figured this isn't working. And so we picked our best and brightest individuals about IT and put them together in a room and said, come back to the group with some recommendations on how we should proceed and how we should make dot-com better than it is, bigger, better, and more efficient. And so Duffy is here to present what the task force came up in recommendations, and I think you will like it.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann. Duffy Boyle, CIO for dot-com. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about how we can move the IT governance and structure forward and eventually get to an interlocal agreement that I think will make IT much, much stronger. Before I do, I'd just like to let you know who is on the task force. On the county side, that was Joe Lorenz, Tim Kelso, and Roland Hammond. And on the city side, Pam Spacrotella, Deb Sander, and Libby Davis. So the seven of us have worked quite hard over the last two months to come up with this recommendation -- these recommendations. The real reason why we're here is that we spend over $12,000 each year on IT, and that's just the dot-com budget. We -- there's, as you know, lots of technology in other departments, so it's much more than $12 million, but that is the dot-com budget. And our goal is to make IT more strategic, more transparent, efficient, and flexible. So we believe that these recommendations will help us move in that direction. First of all, a little bit of background. In 2000, we were looking at how can we best merge city and county IT. And we bought in Deloitte and Touche. They made a recommendation. And out of the recommendations, we came up with an interlocal agreement. And that interlocal left many unanswered questions, which led to quite a bit of user dissatisfaction. And that was dissatisfaction of the city, the county, and dot-com. So in 2008, Costas Tragus was hired, and he came in and looked at the technology and how we were managing technology and made recommendations. We then went to build another interlocal agreement, but as we did, we kept getting bogged down because we could not gain agreement on exactly how to write that and how make that happen. So the User Committee that we have, that's been a part of dot-com since the beginning, they had a subcommittee that was focused on looking at the governance or, you know, how IT should be structured, how we could get better IT services out of dot-com. And they were working pretty hard on that. And at the same time, I was doing the same for our Board of Directors, because clearly it was my belief that we have made tremendous progress over the last couple of years on IT, but it just is not sustainable unless we're all working together and working stronger than what we are today. So in the end of May, we met with, as Mary Ann said, we met with Mary Ann, Kathy Kelly, and Steve Holtman from the mayor's staff. And out of that, we came up with a task force. And they appointed us and asked us to go and try to come up with a recommendation that seemed to make sense for both the city and the county. So what I'm going to talk about today is the recommendations that we've come up with. And we view those as a framework. We don't have all of the answers. What you'll see, we'll talk about in here, is there's a couple of key components to this recommendation that need to be in place before we make all of those answers. But what our expectation is, is that with this framework, we start over again and start building IT and putting the framework in place and the policies in place. This will take time, but at least this gives us a roadmap for being successful. We started out the task force talking about what are the different issues that we needed to solve. And these all came from feedback from the User Committee and from dot-com. But one of the first ones is that most of the board members are not IT stakeholders today. And that it's viewed that dot-com does not have proper accountability. If people don't like the way that dot-com is going, there's no good way to make change in their minds. And from a dot-com perspective, we need to have a single voice from each of the city and the county on what they want to do with technology, what are the strategies, what are the goals that they have. Today, we have user departments that make unilateral IT decisions. That in itself, I mean, making their own decisions is one thing, but if they're not coordinated with the direction of other departments, that creates issues that we need to resolve. As you know, the whole question about the cost of IT services has been an issue, and while we've made progress on that, it's not to the point of where we need it to be, so we need to improve that. There's no consistent revenue to support the core infrastructure. As you know, there's been lots of budget cuts, and I understand those. But when we start looking at budget cuts, there's a certain amount of infrastructure that you just can't cut out. So to do the cuts that we've had, we've got to support that core infrastructure, which we're adding money on to. So that just means there's more impact to the additional services we can deliver, and there's no good way of prioritizing how we make those cuts. We don't have good service levels today, so what are the expectations of the users of us or how we're supposed to deliver services? And we don't leverage a lot of the IT purchases. That we believe that we could leverage them more and get better pricing. This is especially related to PCs and printers, those types of things that we buy a lot each year, but each department does it on their own. So we don't go and say we need to do 1,000 of these each year and then get the best pricing for 1,000. Instead, we're buying 20 at a time, something like that. So those were the issues that we wanted to resolve. The planned changes that we have in here is, first of all, is to establish an IT oversight committee. And I'll talk in more detail on these, but the Oversight Committee will replace the Board as we have it today. Both the city and the county would hire an IT coordinator. Once those coordinators are hired, we would build a managed service contract. And a managed service contract would show the different services that we have, what are the service levels that we would deliver, and the cost for each of those services related to our core infrastructure. We would also determine a process for using non-dot-com services. We have people doing that today. We'd like to have a process around that to make sure everybody is aware of both the costs and the risks of making those decisions, and that at least we're all on the same page if those decisions are made. And then the billing system is we would work together to agree on the units of measure of how we would bill. One of the key components of this is for on-demand services is that the city and the county only pay for the services that they use. It's not spread across the city and the county. And we want to embed it in this is flexibility for departments to meet their own IT needs. As I mentioned, though, we want to put a process around that. But that's been one of the issues all along, is that the interlocal today says that dot-com will supply all of the IT services. It doesn't work that way in practice, and we don't believe that it probably should work that way. So we want to have some flexibility. So those are the key changes we have. And just a couple of kind of definitional things. When we talk about core infrastructure and then the non-core, core infrastructure are things like the network that connects all of the computers together or the phone system that nearly everybody uses, email, Oracle, those kinds of things that we believe should be shared by the city and the county. We still want to do it based on usage, but these are things that are core to us to be able to run other systems on top of that. So there are some things that would be in a gray area of whether we'd consider that core or on-demand, and those would be worked out once these coordinators are in place. The on-demand services that are not core then, there are things like applications development. If a department needs to have a special application written to run their business systems, that would be on-demand, and you would just pay for the services that you use. We have a number of departments that have specialized phone systems because they have needs over and above everyone else, so they would pay for that on their own. If we were going to do project management or buy new applications, all of that would be on-demand services. The managed service contract that we talked about, and this will be a key component that really is the contract that says this is what dot-com will deliver. It starts with here are the services that we deliver and what the cost will be for those. It then would also include items that would increase the cost, whether it's added storage, the bandwidth for the Internet. If we make changes that say we need to have additional Internet bandwidth, you know, this contract would probably say something like, for this cost, you get 100 megabytes. You know, I know that's technical, but you get this big of a pipe to do Internet. If you need this big of a pipe, we've got to pay more money for that. So we would like to outline as many of those as we can. And then there's other kind of normal things in there. What would be the billing strategy, the different service levels? What happens if we're in non-compliance? And how do we escalate issues if they come up? Because we'll not think of everything day one, so we need to have a process for escalating. Our goal would be for the core infrastructure that there's a three-year commitment from the city and the county to support that portion of our expenses. And what we believe that does is it puts a little more continuity into the planning of where we're going and how we will manage that core infrastructure. This is a high-level diagram then of the way that we look at this organization. On the county side, the coordinator would be a director-level person that would report in through the county board. And they'd be the person then that would keep you updated on what's going on in technology. And then they would work with Kathy Kelly for the day-to-day administration. On the city side, it would report up through the mayor's office. And these coordinators then work closely with the dot-com CIO to set the policies and the strategies and standards in place that we need to do. Dot-com then is really the service provider, so the direction really is coming from the city and the county for their technology, and then dot-com is responsible for executing on those demands. We still view that some of the city and county departments may have some of their IT support. What we believe, though, is that this gives us the opportunity to manage that and make sure that it's transparent as to what the costs are, what the risks are of what they're doing. And of course, the citizens then still, they would be giving input into where they want to go into the departments, and the department's pushing that up through the coordinators. So some of the key roles in here, and this task force has put this together in a way where we've essentially built job descriptions for the key components of this. And the first is in the IT Oversight Committee. This committee then is similar to our board. They do the hire-fire salary of the dot-com CIO. They give performance input on the coordinators. And then they're ensuring that the service level agreements and the managed service contracts are both acceptable and that we can fund them properly and that we're living up to those agreements. Then they're also there if there are disagreements between city and county departments or with dot-com. We would escalate that to the Oversight Committee, and they would be the ultimate The membership of this committee, I think, is important, since this is a big change between the way that the dot-com board is today. First of all, city and county finance would be components of this and key members. I think that does a good job for us to have that input on the financial side of where we're going. Plus, they're the closest to knowing what else is going on in city and county government, so that would be a great add. Then there would be stakeholders from both the city and the county side, two each. The county, one would be a representative of the elected officials and the other of the other departments. And then to make the board an uneven number, we would also bring in somebody from the outside that has experience with delivering IT services in this similar kind of way of what we're recommending here today. So as far as the stakeholders go, we want to make sure that they are people that use the technology, have a good understanding of the technology as well. I think that's going to be important. The IT coordinators then, they become the primary dot-com contacts for all of the technology needs. They develop the long-term technology goals and strategies for the organization, and they'll coordinate the IT prioritization process. That's another area that we have struggled with since day one, is how do we set priorities? Then they will also work with us to establish the managed service contract, service level agreements. And I think one of the other big changes here is that this would explicitly give them the accountability for approving any policy changes or process changes, standard changes. We, from dot-com, will make those recommendations. They will then work with the city and the county to make sure that those recommendations are consistent, both from a financial perspective and from a business perspective, and then ultimately approve them. And then dot-com is the group that executes on them. CIO job, while it doesn't change dramatically, we still view dot-com will change. It has to change from where it is today to get more service-oriented, to be able to deliver these on-demand services. But essentially, the CIO works with the coordinators to set, to make recommendations on where we should head with technology, and then is responsible for executing on that. And we would still be the, negotiate a lot of the IT vendor contracts and do, manage those vendors. We've built this in a way that we want to be able to take this to legal and build an interlocal agreement. So we've added a few additional items that would be in there that we want to talk about. One is that we want to make sure that we refresh our equipment on a regular basis, so it doesn't get totally outdated as it has in the past. We just recently removed a server from our infrastructure that was 13 years old, and, you know, caused a lot of problems before we could get it moved. And there's lots of that out there. We've made a lot of headway over the last year and a half, and the projects for success, which you approved here, you know, about a year ago, is really taking hold now. So we're making a lot of investments and advancements. We want to make sure that we don't get back into this point where we have outdated equipment. This is just more of a technical thing. As dot-com, through the Board, had to have any approval of spending in excess of $50,000, that would continue. The city and the county finance would take that over. We can still support other entities besides the city and the county, but the city and the county will always get priority. We want to make sure that we do a better job of leveraging purchasing to gain quantity discounts on technology purchases. And we still want to keep the User Committee concept in place, but the city and the county will each do that on their own, based on their own individual needs. This slide, I'm not going to go through in detail, but this just kind of puts in, here's the resolution of how we address the issues. These are things that I've talked about, but we wanted to recap the different issues that we had and the way we resolved them. We think that they have all been addressed and believe that this framework will help us move this forward. So the next steps, as we see it, is first of all, is we want the city and the county to agree to this concept, to move forward. We would then, we would put a resolution in front of you in the next two weeks or so. And to get that agreement, assuming we get that, we want to finalize the job descriptions for the IT coordinator and make any changes we need to the CIO job description. We would then go and hire the IT coordinators, get them in place, because they need to be a part of making some of these decisions. But at that same time, we would start working with legal department to build the interlocal agreement. And the task force that we have, we're recommending that we stay together until that interlocal agreement is in place because, you know, so we can help make that happen. And then, once we get the coordinator positions filled, then we want to start working on the managed service contract. And I think those things can happen before the interlocal's in place, as long as we're all in agreement that this is the direction that we want to go. So with that, open to any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Have you done this presentation for the Omaha City Council yet?
Yes. This morning, we met with all but one in the city council.
Oh, so you did it in one-on-one meetings or?
Yeah, in small group sessions.
Okay. You didn't do it in front of the whole board then?
No.
And how was their reception?
I think very positive.
Good, okay. Do you have a timeframe that you think this can be implemented in?
We do. In the packet that we had sent has a timeline that we're expecting. I think the, we have broken it down into phases. And the first phase is really is to start moving forward and getting the coordinators in place and start working on the interlocal and everything. And first is to get the agreement to move forward. That we'd like to get that done over the next month, let's say. And then to get the coordinators really in place and up to speed, maybe take up through the first quarter of 2012. And then, you know, we'd get the managed service agreements and everything else in place. And that might take us until, you know, about the first nine months or so of next year. But essentially, we see this being an ongoing evolution as opposed to just a point in time everything's different.
And do you see any point during this process where they'll interfere, interfere with the flow of information that we currently have and the usage of services?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And I would assume, so correct me, has the committee looked at cloud services?
That would be a technology that we'd want to look at with, when the coordinators are in place. This certainly allows for us to look at the different strategies. I think from a dot-com perspective, the answer is yes. We've already been going down that path. We use some cloud services today. We currently have an email assessment going on where cloud is, you know, definitely an option on email, so that will be considered. And even in our core infrastructure, once this is in place, you know, the one thing nice about this is breaking out the core infrastructure. It lets dot-com start focusing on how can we deliver that core at a better cost each time? Because we know we're going to need to do new things, and my experience in technology is, is that you keep looking for ways to improve the cost of your existing so that you can invest in new things. And so we have been exploring some cloud services just for even some of our core infrastructure.
And for the watching public, not everybody knows what cloud services are. That would be services like Google Mail, Gmail is a good cloud service, MSN is a cloud service. There are different programs that are continually updated on servers that are not within our control, but are within our security. control, but are within our security parameters, I guess you could say.
Right.
So that's what we mean by cloud services. Now, do you see anywhere, Rolda, anywhere where there's potential for failure within the process you outlined today?
The areas that I would say, one is, I think, is probably the most obvious, is if you look at that structure, you know, it's very dependent on the county coordinator, the city coordinator, and the CIO working well together. So I think that's important, that we have good chemistry there and that we're all working in similar directions. So that would be one item of failure that we've talked about, but as we go through it, I believe that's true in any working relationship. You know, we all have people that we have to work with, and if we don't work well together, it's not going to be successful. But I think that's going to be a key component of the Oversight Committee, to make sure, you know, that we are in sync. The other for me, though, is that the expectation that everything would be perfect day one coming out of the chute. There's a lot of things that need to be done that haven't been worked on in a long time, service level agreements, what are core services, all those. So, you know, it's going to be evolutionary, and if people think that we flip the switch and everything's better, you know, it's not going to happen that way. But I think if we keep looking back every six months to see the improvements, I think everybody will be pleased with how that goes.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Otisha.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I also have some questions, some of them following up with Mark. And I know we have tried different options throughout the years. Seriously, though, what makes you think that this one will work?
Well, I think it will work because I've been in this role for about two and a half years. We've made tremendous strides, the team has, the city and the county have. But one of the things that I think is missing is this whole thing about accountability. And while a lot of the users feel that dot com is not accountable, which I understand under the terms they're saying, I would say that the city and the county also have not really been accountable for, you know, putting strategies together to move them forward. What this does is it makes somebody accountable for putting together IT strategies that support the county and the city. I think the other thing that will make this better is the pay for the services that you use. That's going to be difficult for us to put into place on some of this, because, you know, say we have on our staff 20 programmers, and somebody decides we don't want to use those 20 programmers for two months, we still, it's not going to be always possible to let those people go, especially new people or people that have our business knowledge. I should say it this way, we don't want to let those people go. We don't want to lose that business knowledge. So we have to change a little bit of the way we do our thinking and manage those resources and prioritize them. But I do think the fact that you're only paying for the services that you use will make this better as well.
And with that, that brought up two questions. First of all, I've always had an issue with the billing, because, you know, it's just all lump sum, so I appreciate you working strongly on this. Second of all, if you bring in these IT persons to oversee, and let's say they come to you and say, we don't, and I understand you just said you don't want to let those 20 people go.
Yep.
But let's say they say, you don't need this many people, we can combine all this into one program or one section or one cloud or whatever, how are you going to determine that, then? Will you take their advice on that?
Absolutely. I mean, the way I view dot com is, we're here to execute on the strategies of the city and the county. And, you know, the way I envision that happening is, we would sit down, in fact, we're already starting really breaking down our costs to very minute levels so we can kind of compare, we want to be able to compare how we charge ours compared to what would be out on the market rates, so that we have that information. The way I would envision under this is that we would work together and say, as we're doing our budgets, and, you know, say we do need to cut our budgets, then it was like, okay, here are the components that we have that we can cut, and if we cut them, you know, here's what the impact would be. So, dot com, there's really no choice. I mean, if the city or the county, and it works this way today, is they say, you got to spend less money, then we spend less money. The difference here, though, is that we will have somebody to work with to say, where are the best places to cut those dollars?
Okay, so basically, the IT people are not even going to look at just the different programs that are being brought to them to say, I need this done or that done. They're going to be looking at everything in general?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Another question I have, when you hire these IT people, everybody is, all the departments, including the elected officials, are they going to come to these IT people and say what they want, or is it still the elected officials who'll be able to do whatever they want with their own departments?
No, the expectation is that the county commissioners, like on the county side, that they would support a, through this resolution and through the inter-local that says the coordinator would be the one that they would still go through. Now, obviously, they may not always agree with what the coordinator comes up with, and that's where this Oversight Committee is. And that's also why the coordinator for the county would report in through this board to resolve the issues.
And that was what I was going to ask, who says that they can't bypass that IT coordinator person?
I mean, you know the structure better than I do, but as I understand it, is once the budgets are set in place, you know, that the elected officials still can make, you know, decisions to spend that. What our goal is, is to make it so that, you know, they don't want to go different directions. And I'm reasonably confident that that will happen, but, you know, that's with me here, you know, somebody else is here, I don't know for sure.
Okay. And like I said, but who says that they can't bypass these people and go to somebody on dot com and say, you know, I need mine first, or, you know, I'm more important, or this job is more important? Who says that can't happen?
Well, I say that can't happen.
Okay.
I mean, I can't allow dot com to, you know, bypass the framework that we put in place.
Okay, okay. And during your, I went over your report a little bit, now, the coordinators will be able to say if, and you brought this up in your presentation, that let's say dot com cannot handle this, so we're going to outsource this.
Yes.
Now, they understand that outsourcing could mean, you know, another physical company or whatever, but also the cloud versions, correct, also?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, just want to check on that. Now, when you said that you're going to consider bringing in other entities from outside, but the city and county comes first, are you going to, I mean, right now, you guys are so backlogged.
That's right.
You know, are you even going to be able to have time to do something?
This is something that's in the inter-local today. In reality, we do a little bit of this already, you know, like for the tennis association for metro area transit or the metro transportation. So we have some entities that are there already. We just want to make sure that it's specified in the inter-local agreement that the city and the county will always get priority.
Okay. Another question I have, you said about the equipment, refreshing the equipment, are these IT people going to oversee that? Because I know some of our equipment is extremely old, and a lot of it needs to be updated. Are they also going to oversee that to the point saying, okay, let's eliminate this and let's go to a different source or whatever? Or will they say, let's eliminate this machine and buy a brand-new one?
No, the way that I would envision that is that dot com would come to these people and say, this part of our infrastructure is at risk because this is outdated, so we're recommending to make this enhancement. We would put a business case together like we do today. They would be the ones saying, yeah, that makes sense, or it doesn't make sense.
Okay, okay. One other question, and again, you brought this up, on, let's say both the city and county come to you the same day, they both have something they need done, it's both high, you know, high importance, it's emergency, and they need, how are you going to determine which one comes first?
Well, I guess that's like we do every day, but primarily is, you know, we try to find a way. Many times, even today, was we'll look for some outside resources to help in something like that. But if it really came to push-to-shove, you know, where we couldn't do both of them, we would take it to the Oversight Committee and let each, the city and the county, put their case in front of it, and they would be responsible for making the ultimate decision.
Okay. And one other question on these IT coordinators, where's the, is that in the budget currently? Where is the cost coming to go ahead and, because you need two of them, correctly?
Right. It's definitely in the city budget. Joe has said that he'll find the money.
Blimey on Joe.
So Joe.
Yeah, you know, we have a certain amount of money that we put aside for IT spending that's not specifically identified, and it would be my thought that it would be funded out of that IT spending pool, and this would just be a specific requisition of that money.
Okay. And then you said you're looking at approximately three years. I think you had your timeframe again on September 30th, Phase 1, March 31st of 2012, Phase 2, September 30th of 2012, Phase 3, and no later than January 1st of 2013 for to be complete. Are you, and I know you said you would like to have it three years, but let's say a year down the road, let's say we do signs for the three-year contract.
Yep.
And let's say a year down the road, you even decide, or anybody decides, it's just not working.
Yeah. Actually, we anticipate, there has to be the normal outs for both the city and the county on this, you know, with the appropriate notice, so that would be built into that. And as far as the three-year term for the core infrastructure, that's what we want to build to. But quite honestly, we're not going to put the best agreement together year one.
Yeah, and I understand that.
So we know that.
And you're going to have a lot of work to do with your first year.
Yes, that's right.
And do you think that it might come up, that let's say the city or county, one of them might say, well, we're not happy with it, but the other one is?
Anything's possible.
Okay.
I don't think we're going into that saying, you know, we don't expect that by any means.
But it's another.
But it's possible.
It's another thing out there.
And we, you know, we've thrown that out. I mean, what if you toss this whole thing out and say, city wants to go one direction, county wants to go another? You know, the thing is, is that there will be a lot of added costs, you know, as opposed to shared costs. But there's lots of ways to make that happen. We just believe this is, you know, a framework that can make this successful.
Okay. And I do have one other question. On your billings, you have base services, and you put a substantial amount of dollars under base services. Is that going to be broken down, or you're still going to have base services?
No, it would still be broken out, though. I mean, like, when we talk about our core or base services, you know, things like, we have a mainframe out there, and, you know, the county uses more of that than the city, so we would have that broken out separately from network connections, you know, that connect to different offices. The city uses a lot more of that, those would be itemized.
But that's, I like hearing that. And I like how the billing process will be broken down a little bit more understandable for all of us.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
In reading this over, and you were kind enough to send out an advance copy, which I looked at, and I didn't have the time, unfortunately, to make some direct comments to everyone and you particularly. But I'm really concerned that it's cumbersome for you, actually. And I originally thought, I was trying to think of what kind of a model would work better for you, and I'm really convinced, almost completely, that what we should be looking at is something that's modeled after the Building Commission, where we have a professional, in this case, we have Mr. Cohen, who would be you, and we have a respected member of the community, which in this, Building Commission is Mr. Roskins. And then we have two city and two county elected officials. And it seems to really hum along. I mean, they get things done, I receive their minutes, I read them, I see what's going on, and so that it makes it a lot easier for Mr. Cohen, rather than having him come down here every couple of weeks and say, you know, we need to add a pipe down on the third level. And I really am concerned, frankly, because I've been around the block, when I was in politics in the mayor's office, and I left and went back to law practice, and I've watched off and on and been involved in these joint efforts for years. Frankly, I think, I'm really concerned, I think this is doomed. It's a little cumbersome, from what I can see. I will end up voting for it, probably. It's a little late, probably, to be making this suggestion, but I think something modeled after the Building Commission would really be, first of all, it's something that elected officials in the city and in the county are comfortable with. And I think the elected officials are comfortable with it. They have to go there to get things changed in their offices and so forth, although we all have public property departments of our own. So I'm rambling on this, but I think that's, frankly, would be a better solution, and I know it, speaking to Commissioner Duda, took an act of the legislature to create the Building Commission. It does have taxing authority, which is an attractive, not necessarily for a lot of agencies that have taxing authority, but this is one that makes sense because it's public safety and all sorts of things involved. But I think that's where we ought to go sometime, after, if we approve this, which I think we will, that we start to focus on another restructuring that's even simpler, and that is modeled after the Building Commission. So, I'm off my soapbox now. Do you have some ballpark figures, unless I miss them here, of what this is all going to cost?
Well, the expectation is, the coordinators is really the two new positions that we're putting into this, and that they're somewhere around $120,000 each for those.
I think I've really said my piece. I wish you well. I mean, if I could pick a cousin, I'd pick you, Doug.
And I think I've turned him down.
We're not putting that to a vote.
Okay.
I guess, I guess, let me kind of build off some of the questions everybody else has. I mean, my gut tells me that there's still a, well, one, will we see you back here as updates until this thing gets complete? Because I do think there's one more, you know, I actually think there's one more evolution you got to go through. I don't know what it is. And I'm glad to see you talk to the point that it's not going to be perfect, but I guess I see it, because the question is, I mean, from what you're laying out, I think the 12 million you laid out initially that's in the system is just the floor.
Yeah.
And I do have some concerns on, I guess, how exactly this thing will lay out, and I'm sure you all are working out in agreement, but, I mean, just to state it, for instance, there'll probably be, like you noted, the 20 employees. And when you said that situation is kind of like, I felt like the daycare with my kid, because even if I take him out for a month, I still got to pay for the month.
Right.
So the people are there.
Yep.
So even if I don't use it, I got to pay for it. And then, the issue of this whole shared equipment leverage piece, and I was thinking, like, how much cost is really going to be there, because you got this situation where, how would that end up being split? So you get, you know, 50 equipment requests from the city, 20 from us, I'm sure those are not going to be shared in the same pot.
Right.
And how that has to work out. So, I'm saying my gut tells me there's another evolution.
There's a lot to work.
Yeah.
There's a lot of work to be done. I think this sets us up, though, to make constructive progress. And as far as, you know, will I come back? I'll come back as often, you know, to give updates as you would like. And I'm sure the rest of the task forces would be willing to do that as well.
You know, and I don't, you know, I don't think you have to be back every month, and we do have a rep and we get the updates, but still, I just think it's going to be another, I think you all are going to do this, and there's still going to be another change that needs to be made. That's just my gut, and I don't know what it is, but, you know, we'll see where it goes.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Rogers that this may not be the final word. I agree with Commissioner Boyle that the Building Commission is a good framework, but I see this as being a little bit like the Building Commission. I like this. I think this is a good move. I was never comfortable with dot com, I never supported the creation of it, for a lot of the very reasons that we're seeing now. It wasn't even being run by city and county people originally, and we've tinkered with it through the years, but it still has some inherent problems. I think this is a great step in the right direction. I applaud it, I support it, it may not be the final word, but it is still a good move. We got to do something. And I applaud the people that have brought this forward to us. And I applaud the people that have brought this forward to us for, for our consideration. I think it's a good move, I like it.
Good, thank you.
That's all the comments. And just so you know, Commissioner Duda, I did take the idea of governance being the idea that we brought forth when dot com was first developed about just having it in one department underneath the county board and the city didn't like that idea. And, and that was fine, but we all knew and know to this day from being on the board, the dot com board, that something has to change. Something has to move in a different direction and for both the city and the county to have individuals sitting around the table and come up with a recommendation that they all agreed with, I think is a step in the right direction. We know that there's going to be tweaks. We know that there's going to be things that are going to have to be brought back to this board for approval or changing or whatever, but I don't in any way look at this as a negative. I look at it as a positive that we've admitted that what we have is working but not working the way it should work. And that's a big step. We just didn't walk away, we just didn't say, you know, throw some words in an interlocal and continue to do what we're doing. We actually tried to make a recommendation that was going to be good for both parties. And again, may not be the end-all, but it's a good start. And so, what, I would hope that we would have a resolution next week on the board to move forward with this. And then again, to Commissioner Rogers' points, there'll be things brought periodically to the board as updates and being that rep, I'll make sure that you guys, that I do that, bring that to you guys, so. Commissioner Boyle?
I was wondering, as you spoke and after Commissioner Duda talking about tweaking and so forth, will Mr. Boyle have to come back to us and to the city council if something needs to be redone on this presentation? I mean?
No, probably not until we get to the service level agreements and management service contract levels. I think what that he would come back for is an update on where we are in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
And Duffy, I want to congratulate you at least. I know I asked a lot of questions and it sounded like I was negative, but, and I didn't mean to intend to do that. You've got a long road ahead of you and I, but I want to congratulate you for trying to bring something like this. I hope it works, I really do, but I was, I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit leery yet, but I do want to congratulate you on at least attempting this.
Okay, thank you.
And we appreciate those comments. I mean, again, we can do what we're doing and continue on that path, but I think we can all agree that that's not the right path. And so, the paths that we looked at to be able to come to this point ended up being this path and we'll see where it takes us. I, again, just because we've had both the city and the county sitting around the table coming up with this and people who are knowledgeable of IT, people who are knowledgeable of what is needed, and of course with Duffy's leadership. I mean, I think we've gotten so far in these last two and a half years with Duffy at the helm than we have in a long time and so, I think if we stay positive and stay on this path, we'll, we'll see good things happen.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
With that, before we move to the committees, we do have to come back to and reconsider one of the consent items. There was a misunderstanding about what this really was and it's item E, the resolution authorizing the chair to enter into an agreement with aptitude solutions for project archive access to provide a record searching service. And so, before, I need a motion to reconsider that agenda item so we can.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes.
And I see, whoops, I saw that she was here, but the, I guess, Joe and Kathy, if you want to maybe give a little briefing of, we thought this was an archiving system that we were looking at at the same time as what was presented last week or a couple of weeks ago. Could you just brief us on what this actually is?
Yeah, in going through this agreement, you know, if you, if you look at the original request justification form, it said the amount requested is zero, but as we went through the actual agreement and looked at the outlines toward the end of it, there are some commitments for development of a module that they've estimated at $36,000 to $60,000 and a microfilm conversion at $91,000 that I'm just not, that, you know, we don't understand well enough right now and we just have to answer some questions, I think, before we would sign off on it.
Diane, we're in the process of re-discussing or discussing the agenda item that you put on here and what, how does this relate to what you presented to us? And then there was also that it's not in the budget and there's no money requested for the project, so we just need a little bit more understanding.
Diane Badiato, Register of Deeds. This is, this is, let me back up a little bit. As you all are aware, we have, dot com had implemented the Doc Center Imaging Enterprise Project that's been going on for two years that took all of the images off the platters because they were antiquated. We were the last office to get live, become live with that and we did that June 24th. That's going great. The second leg to the entire records management system, Aristotle, which is what the big system we've been talking about for the last several months, that's the, that's the final step of getting everything online. Project Archive Access, the one that we're bringing to you today that was on the consent agenda item, is basically step two of our records process and we've done the RFP, aptitude solution did, did win the RFP on that. And what this is doing, it's a, the second step to our image access. They will be imaging our records, index books, the ones that sit on our walls in our office. Prior, that's all the records prior to 1989 when we still wrote in the books. The searchers that come in right now that have to come into our office to do their title searching, they have to go back in time through all of those, whichever property they're on. So, they search through those index books to find out what specific document they may need to pull or look at or get a copy of to be able to complete their title search. Everything from 1989 on is on computer, which would be on the image that we're looking at. By scanning these, scanning our archive microfilm documents, this project will enhance the image project that's already intact by allowing them to actually search the index books remotely and request or view copies of the documents that are prior to 1989. So, this is like we have our images from 89 to current on image right now that they're able to view remotely. The second leg is the index search books and the archive documents that when this is implemented, they will be able to search remotely. Aristotle is actually the compilation of the entire mainframe, which is actually the history screen, the updated indexing on, on date, you know, on new documents and everything, putting it all together in one process. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And is this the, the company that is currently providing that service is no longer going to be providing it, so we're going with this, is that correct or not? That has nothing to do with this?
You're talking about image?
The Doc Center?
No, Doc Center is still, they're, they're our repository. Doc Center is actually the third-party vendor who is doing our repository and storing all of our images and having a redundant site in our DR site. They're actually the servers now that all of this stuff will be sitting on.
Okay, so that's separate from the?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Craft?
But, but all of these images that in this, in this archive access project, they will be housed in the same repository with Doc Center. So, when the public goes to search for whatever, whatever information they're needing and they're actually going to pull an image, that image will be coming from the same repository that the current images are. So, they're, it just enhances the inventory of images to encompass all of our archive images as well as current day images.
But you don't have this in your budget this year and so, with it not in your budget, has dot com okayed it or where have, I mean, it's on the agenda as a consent item, which it's on there when we don't even know where we're going to get the money to pay for it unless you know.
Well, yes, we have the money to, we already, the money's there to pay for it, not in our current year budget, it's encumbered for this project. It's already encumbered for this project from, from past budgets with dot com. We've been working in conjunction with dot com to, to save up for this project basically. And the only thing we're going to be asking from day forward is the 3,500 for the maintenance, but we're not asking for extra money because with the implementation of this project, A, we're going, we're assuming we're probably going to get more subscribers to our system, which would be imaging and index books at this point in time because more services and convenience will be available for them not to have to come to the office. We still have CPAN going with dot com, that's the mainframe, which they, that's a whole nother story, so those subscribers will be subscribing still to CPAN for their history screen, but they'll be a growing subscribership because they won't have to come to the office to search the books. So, that will help enable us to reach that 3,500. Another one is that as we grow with e-recording, we'll be having to spend less on postage and that's an evolution that each year has, has grown and grown in the last two years and will only get, get more so as more submitters start electronically recording. Thirdly, because of the fact that we're going to have our archived documents that are now on our electrovers back in microfilm, there will be less need for users to come to the office, request copies, so we'll have less payment, less money spent in toners, equipment maintenance and things like that. So, for the 3,500 maintenance, we're feeling we'll be able to absorb that easily with the savings we'll be finding from having the project.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, Diane, you said this is only going to be $3,500 per year.
Yes.
But when we get way to the bottom of the agreement, it shows that fee summary and payment schedule. Licensing fee, $17,500, maintenance, $3,500, certain module, $2,000, onsite professional services, $8,500, development index module, $36,000 to $60,000 at $150 per hour, microfilm conversion, 1,500, $15,000, and microfilm conversion including indexing by book and page, $91,000, $9,000 to load image of document pages. Now, where is that money coming from?
That's the money that we have encumbered.
Through dot com?
Yes.
Where is that money, is that, so that money is in dot com currently?
Earmarked, earmarked for our office for this project.
Okay, it's earmarked, but do they have that money in hand?
It's not their money, it's my money.
It's your money?
I mean, it's our, our money.
Okay.
We don't want to go, we don't want to go there again.
Okay.
Okay.
See, I can read the word encumbered two different ways.
Okay.
One is earmarked and I'll get it out of the budget somehow. Two is, it's already in the bank in earmarked, it's in the bank.
Yes, yes. That money is there. And I'll tell you, you know, I'm, Michael told me the whole story. Okay. Unfortunately, in, since 2005 and I've been in office and most of you have been here, some of you haven't since then, I've come to the board a couple times for projects and they've been denied and they've always been denied, obviously, because of finances. I run a very frugal shop, we don't spend a lot of money that, that we don't have to spend at the end, so the last four budgets, I've tried to encumber, we've tried to be, because we're frugal, we've tried to, and we've had this in the plans for all of these years, knowing that we're not going to get the money from the board and in order to go forward, we have to find a way to get the money. So, I've been very frugal in my yearly budget and I have earmarked a little bit, earmarked, encumbered, however you want to do it, Commissioner Craft, in the last four budgets for this project. This last budget year, we had enough to pay for the project, we've encumbered it with dot com to hold it for that project and it'll, that's why we have the funds to pay for it. The 3,500 is going to be an ongoing maintenance. I've already stated it, how, how we feel we will be able to absorb that in our budget, so that shouldn't be an issue.
So, when I look at your budget, when I go back to look at it, where do I find this encumbered money?
It's not in my, it's not in my line item budget.
Diane, is Joe, is she talking about the technology fund?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
I believe what, if I understand it right, over the previous years and previous budgets, at the end of the year, you had money left over that you've encumbered for these projects that's been, that's sitting there, kind of banked it, as you will, and it's really money that came out of your departmental budget, not the dot com budget.
Right.
And you've encumbered it over the years and you're saying you would pay for this project by releasing those encumbrances that you historically accumulated, is that correct?
That's, that's exactly correct. And all of our projects, all of our technology projects have to go through dot com anyway. So, that's why we, you know, that's why it's tied up with a specific PO specifically for technology and we're going to be using that for this project. That's why we're not having to ask for any extra money.
So, so you're saying that you're in reconciliation. You're not putting that money back into the general fund as we had, I believe, all of us had been expecting it to be, any, any surplus goes back to the general fund.
We basically paid a bill in advance. This, this bill.
And, okay, yeah, I, I, we may need to lay this over for a week to, to mold this over.
Well, I guess I, I guess I'd have to question why that would be.
So, we can satisfy ourselves?
In, in what, what area?
In whichever way each of us would like to be satisfied as to the answers.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think for me, I think we were counting on, on that income as part of our cash that we needed to spend for caring for people who have Alzheimer's or who have mental problems and whatever it may be, that it's not your money, that it's the county's money and we need to, our job is to take the revenue you produce, like the treasurer's interest and anybody else that brings money in, and then spend it on priorities.
I took it out, I mean, we took it out of my approved budget. I mean, it's just as if anybody has a saving, any, anytime if you have a planned project that you need money for and you can't get the approval from the bodies who, who release that money for very wise advancement in technology and you save for a rainy day, it's saving for a rainy day, it's not taking anything away from anything.
I don't know that we approve of, of elected officials saving for a rainy day or paying for a bill in advance. I think that's what triggered a little bit of surprise.
Well, how else did you want me to tell you? I had to tell you, you know, the way it is.
We're not sure we think that's what you should be doing. I think that, that's my reaction to.
I mean, if I came to you for, if I came to you for money for archive access, as I did in the past, it's always met with denial. How is any elected official, as you are as well, going to move ahead in the services that they provide their users? They can't get consensus from the powers at hand who authorize for projects. How do you expect any of us to go forward as you expect to go forward?
You don't.
You don't go forward? That's not a very proactive.
In today's economy, you cannot go forward if you don't have our approval. Because we're not, we don't allocate the money, you may want to do it. It's like the sheriff who wants to go out and do crime lab in Oklahoma, you know, where any charge is $50 a day or something. I mean, I've had a long, ongoing discussion with him. He brings in $80,000 and we spend millions of property tax dollars to support the crime lab. And I know there's federal drug money that build it, but it's a very expensive proposition. It loses money and we're funding it and we can't, I can't seem to get, make, get any answers out of him.
Well, I'm not asking you to lose money.
Well, we don't, we don't have that, you know, I think the users ought to be paying totally, Diane.
I don't, you mean the users? The users are supposed to pay for our processes?
Yes.
Well, they are, they subscribe to the, they subscribe to the service, but you have to start somewhere. You have to give them something to subscribe to.
What are the benefits to a taxpayer, to the people in this audience? How do, how do the taxpayers in this audience?
Any member of the public can go on our website if they need a copy of their deed because of our, our images online. If they need a copy of their deed, they can go online in our on-demand tier and they can enter that. can enter that document number that they need and they can purchase a copy of that.
And how often does a person need a deed of their property?
We just, it happens every day.
Well, of course it happens every day, but I, I've never gone online. I do have an email that's going back and forth.
Well, we just started this June 24th.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, everyone would like to improve services. John Ewing has tried and tried. He's had to close the downstairs operations of his office because of, of budget cuts and choices that he made to try to make things work. And this is not a time of expanding services. It's not a time of, of, of doing what you're doing. It's just, it's out of sync. And, and the services that you offer need to be paid for by the users. I mean, if it costs $200,000 a month to operate this, you need to generate $200,000 to pay for it. We don't have the money. The taxpayers don't have the money.
Exactly. And I'm not asking for you to generate the money to function this, to process this per month. Well, number one, $200,000 is absurd because, you know, but, but secondly, it's offering, it's offering a technology advancement that will carry through the years.
That we can't afford.
That the users will be paying in their monthly subscriptions.
We can't afford it.
Well, I have the money, so.
I, I just don't think we can afford it, to be honest with you. I really am sorry.
Should I say that?
Thank you. Diane, I'm with you. You've been trying for a long time.
Thank you so much.
You've been trying for a long time to upgrade.
Because it's been a very, very difficult struggle with this board.
Yeah.
Well, I know, we're, we're a tough group. I get that. And, and, and the economy's tough and all that. But I, I recognize how long and hard you have been trying to enhance the, the technology there. And the idea of encumbering funds at, at year-end leftover funds, we depend on some of those funds coming back. And yet when it's in an elected official's budget, that's a little bit different than if it's, say, at the jail or the health center or one, one of our departments. We certainly would not approve this if you didn't have the money. And so you've tried to accumulate the money and now you're asking for our approval. I think it's reasonable. If the board wants to lay it over to look at it better, I'll go along with that. But at the end of the day, I intend to support you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and it doesn't mean I don't support this. It does mean I need, want to look at it further. When I was a member of the Omau City Council, department heads, and I'll use the law department as an example, kept telling us they didn't have money to do this, they didn't have money to do that, they needed more people and they couldn't hire them because they didn't have money. At the same time, they were spending money to remodel their boardroom and they were doing it in chunks of under $20,000 so it wouldn't be visible. Well, I'm a firm believer in truth in budgeting. And that includes truth in budgeting from the various departments. The departments, whether they're elected official or not, should be letting us know, gee, I've stockpiled this much money. And I should see it in their line item budget when I'm studying it. As, as a commissioner, when I look at these budgets, I look at the line items. I want to see everything. So I didn't see that there. So I'm kind of blindsided. Okay? Now, I'd like to know why I didn't see it there. Was it that I overlooked it? I'm sure I overlooked it then.
Because it wouldn't be in the subsequent budgets. It's, can you explain?
It should be, it should be at the year-end, you also have to start making the year-end closing statements then.
If it was in the year-end budget, that would be carryover that went back to the general. What we did, oh, I don't know, I'm, maybe Denise, because she's the one that prepared the encumbrance. I mean, can I let my assistant deputy answer that?
Yes, but first I want to ask Steve. Steve, I, I know you're new and, oh, Joe.
Joe.
Sorry about that. Habits die hard. Joe, would this have shown up in the year-end closing statement?
What happens at, at year-end and it's in every department and elected official budget is, you go over all your accounts and look at your payables and certain expenses that you, the department or the elected official would see, would be incurred in the future that have been, have been budgeted for during the year but not spent through, through the governmental process gets reserved for being an encumbrance. And those encumbrances are all entered at year-end and then as the expenses come in in the future, you, instead of charging against the current year's budget, you charge it against this encumbrance or reserve. And to be honest with you, that's a pretty standard process across all the county departments and elected officials.
So any elected official can start squirreling away money and not showing us where it is in the budget?
Or department head.
Or department head. Okay. I'm going to start to ask, start looking at the year-end balance budget for each department. Commissioner Morgan, do you feel the same way?
Sure. But I think what they're doing is it isn't, it isn't the money left over. Okay. It isn't the money left over. I think what they're doing is it'd be like out of their budget, which you may not catch. They're paying something ahead of time, so it'd be hard to catch. Would that be accurate, Joe?
Well, what you could do, and I'm sure it's in, in the records, is that, you know, in July, late June, everything has to be encumbered by June 30th, by the end of the year. So there would be, you could pull the data that would show all the encumbrances for the county that are made.
Okay. Would you do that for us, please? And give it to all of the commissioners? Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
This, when Steve was here, a few years ago, I actually asked for this very report because that's exactly what was happening. And, and there's, there's goods and bads to it. I think the, the departments and offices are being responsible because they're waiting till the end of the year to make sure that they don't go over budget. And then these projects that they have, if they have money left over, then it should go, you know, then they encumber it, is what it's called, and then it goes into this pot. The problem is, is I don't know if that is really looked at or followed, that it was encumbered for X and it was spent on X, instead of it was encumbered for X and spent on Z. And.
Now, there is a control in place. If it's encumbered, there is an internal control in place. It can only be spent against what it was encumbered for. So that control is in place.
Oh.
That's good. I'm glad to hear that.
Okay.
But, you know, what's to stop a department head or an elected official from over-budgeting year after year after year?
You can't do that.
Yeah, and, and that's my fear, you know, to sneak something. And Diane, I'm not trying to say we're sneaking this by.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I, I want to clarify that. I'm not saying that at all because I know you've been trying to get this. It's just, I was a little blindsided by the way it came about until looking through it to the, whatever page it was, it was way down in the document, I saw these other numbers and, and I said, hmm.
Well, we gave you the overall picks, the overall paperwork of the entire, entire agreement.
Well, I'm glad you did. I'm very glad you did.
Except for the, I, I think if it's, I guess I'm sure, still not, on the requisition, it should have been, what amount you were requesting should have been filled in and that it wasn't in this year's budget, it should have been said that it was encumbered.
Okay. And we questioned that. We, I, we talked about how we should have done that.
So I should have done that.
Yeah.
So here's what I think, if, and I think I'm hearing that there's support, but I think we just need one more week to make sure we understand this encumbered process. And so if everybody's okay with that, we'll bring this back next week. But in the meantime, just so the board has a little bit better understanding of the reporting of these encumbered funds and what exactly the total amount that's encumbered is versus, well, or in addition to, where are we going to get this additional $3,500 for ongoing maintenance? Okay?
And I don't foresee that to be an issue at all.
And, you know, just to echo what Commissioner Duda said, we know that not only you, but other elected officials and department heads are trying to move their offices in, to be more efficient. And this is one of those ways that I think I can see that occurring, especially for the end user and that being the citizens, not just the user of the, the businesses. It's also for the, the citizens.
Yes.
But let us just have one more week to really have a good understanding of the encumbered process and then we'll bring it back.
That's fine. And if anyone has any questions, you know, please feel free to call and ask because I'd be more than glad to sit down with any of you and go over the entire process.
And part of my problem might be, as a small business owner, I was CFO, CIO, acquisitions, purchasing, you know, everything and I never blindsided myself.
Well, and the intent.
I knew what I was encumbering and why I was saving up.
Well, and Commissioner Kraft, the intent was never, never to blindside anyone.
Oh, I, I know it wasn't.
You know, like I said, we've been.
It wasn't because it was in there. If you intended it, you know, it would have been different. But this is asking us to spend the, whatever it is, $100,000, $150,000, without it being at the very front page. Okay? And, and because if we sign this, it wouldn't have to come back to us. Is that correct?
Exactly. This is just like the simple file agreement that we sent to you two years ago and the NGO agreement. Both of those are e-recording vendors. It's the same type of agreement that needs the chair of the board signature to go forward.
And, and, you know, I do want to say the taxpayers' time, money create efficiencies. I, I'm very much into technology. It's just I need to study it.
That's fine.
So I, I would make a motion to reconsider.
Well, do we already have, just to lay over?
To lay it over for one week.
Second. And just so, Joe, if you could prepare the encumbered report for us to look at between now and then for this last, well, I guess it would be for previous years, just say, what, let's see that report.
Yeah, and just to clarify, and as, from what Joe said, that anytime that action is taken to encumber funds, you have to, you have to designate what line item it's, it's going to come out of, correct Denise? And for, and for what type of project. So, you know, I, I couldn't use this money. And that's why we reserved it in dot com because all of our technology projects go through dot com. So it was a way that we could specifically reserve it for this technology project. So I couldn't take money from there and say I'm going to buy carpeting or whatever, you know, or desks or anything. It has to go for, for this techno, for the technology project.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Please vote.
Madam Chair, just clarification. Since previously this item was approved, your motion is to lay over.
Well, we reconsidered it and now we're laying it over. Do we need to make a motion to deny and reconsider or?
We should be.
Did a motion to reconsider.
So that should take care of the approval part?
That's how it's worked.
Uh huh.
And voted affirmatively to reconsider the approval.
Right.
Okay.
So now we're voting to lay it over and it'll be brought back next month, I mean, next week? Okay.
Okay.
Please vote.
Thank you.
So just in the documents for my signature, just make sure that that one's pulled out?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll move to the committee reports. First one is the finance. Commissioner Morgan and Kraft?
Finance committee has submitted. Do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add right now. We will be having a joint meeting with youth, youth services, Commissioner Rogers, to discuss some decisions made by the state. Chris, I'll let you talk about that. What are we going to be discussing at our joint meeting?
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Basically, the, the meeting days will be set out here sometime in September. And basically, what the meetings basically do is to sit down with Ray Curry from Juvenile Court and Physical Administrator to lay out the cost shifts that are occurring because of some decisions on contracts. So I hope it's to lay that out before our meeting with the state senators. That usually happens every year. And give them an idea of what this is going to cost us right now. The estimation could be millions. And then you add in addition the law that was passed last year about the assessors office. So it, it kind of is a prelude to what we're walking into budget-wise, but I think they, they need to be aware of some of the decisions that are being made. So that's pretty much it.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
That's reported as submitted.
Okay. Next is Administrative Services Committee. There's one item.
Thank you. Eric, did you need to speak on this? No. No.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, unless there's.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yes. Does anybody know how the gentleman's planning to use the lot? It is in a floodplain, as I understand it. It cannot be built on. Do you know?
I, I don't know, but he'll have to come back to the planning department to get any kind of permits to do anything.
City. They're known, the city's.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I did go out there just for information to look last week and believe me, I think we're fortunate that we have the bid.
Right.
Well, yeah, if I may, I, I'm, I'm hoping he takes the land and donates it back to the community, the neighborhood association as, or allows them to use it as public access. So, thank you.
Please vote. We'll move to criminal justice. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, the item before us is to authorize a purchasing agent to extend the contract with Correct Care Solutions LLC to provide comprehensive health and mental health services for inmates confined at the Douglas County Department of Corrections. The extension is effective March 1, 2012. The amount of the contract extension, I believe, is $5,204,337. I don't know if there's any need to discuss it. So I, unless someone wants to, I guess I'll defer to the chair.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Quick question. How long is the extension? I assume it's one year?
Year, one year.
Thank you.
And if I could, this is the final year of a, I believe, the five-year contract. And what I.
Then the RFP is going to be.
Right. Then an RFP would go on.
Worked on now for, to go out again.
Right.
Do we need a vote?
Yes. I made a motion, I made a motion to approve and you seconded, I believe.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
I can wait until after we vote.
Okay. Done? Please vote. Commissioner Morgan would like a point of privilege.
I just want to commend Commissioner Boyle for bringing us down to the correction facility last Friday evening. I think that was really helpful informational time and I think we can achieve some things. I think Mark, Foxall, the unions are all working together to improve some of the things that we all discussed there for an hour, hour and a half on Friday evening. So I really thank you for that, bringing that to our attention.
Well, if I could, I, I appreciate that. And I think it's, you know, Dr. Foxall has been very cooperative and it was a good session. It was not a gotcha or a blame session. It was very informative for all of us. was very informative for all of us, and there's always room for improvement everywhere, including, you know, me, so-
Second.
Wait, that wasn't a form of emotion, so, but it's, and I like the positive attitude that Dr. Foxall expressed that evening, and I appreciated the attitude that all the commissioners had while we were there, was how do, how do we make this thing operate even more efficiently? And the nice thing about it is that the uniformed guards that were there, representing the union, and also Dr. Foxall and other staff members who were there, were very open. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, sir.
Well, and one of the things we learned, and I too, Commissioner Morgan, I'm glad you brought this up, because that was an excellent idea to go down during that time. But what we learned was, Dr. Foxall was very open, first there was a discussion on one of, on a Thursday, and he offered the open door to come in every Thursday and talk about issues with the union.
Right.
And I'm telling you, that's gonna make a world of difference, and that was one thing we learned down there, and so, we really do appreciate that, and I know that the union appreciates it, and really, that's how you get things taken care of, is by communicating. So, we were very, very appreciative of learning that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and that door is open to all of you as well.
Thank you. Okay, good.
You gonna take us to lunch, then?
[laughing]
No, I appreciate that very much, I really, I thought it was great. Thanks a lot, Mark.
Thank you.
Have you ever had lunch at the jail?
No, I was telling you-
We have, I can find Claire.
Once is enough.
I told Commissioner Morgan on the way out, I said, "Let's get out of here before we have to eat dinner here."
That's not kidding, we actually did-
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
And he ate it.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Only Carol Percy ever bought lunch.
[laughing]
I can arrange that if you like.
Oh, no.
I just wanna say, to Mark, luckily for me, I had your father as a safety director when I was mayor, and he would be very proud, the apple didn't fall hardly off very far from the tree. You're, you know, really got some good values and caring qualities, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mark.
Commissioner Borgeson, could I make one comment about the health contract? What I would like to do is to, when, when the RFP is prepared, whoever's involved in it, I would like to include, to see if we get any kind of a interest, the two teaching hospitals, in medical hospitals in Omaha, the University of Nebraska Medical Center and Creighton University Medical Center, to see if they would be interested in bidding to provide the services that would allow them to bring in their medical students and so forth, but I'd like to see us include that, if there's any possibility, and no problem with doing that.
Yeah, and I actually had to make a note when we're doing the RFP to make sure that we include that.
Good, thank you very much.
And if I may chime in on that, I think that's an excellent idea, also, boy, you're getting a lot of praise today.
I'm taking, I'm having this, I've asked the county clerk to cut this to several discs, so, my mother were alive, I would be really proud.
I think that's an excellent idea, because it'll also expose some of these budding doctors to a side of the world they may not have ever seen.
Right, that's true.
As they say, Commissioner Boyle, this was your moment. Don't expect it to be on the news. So, good job, good job.
Thank you.
Next is the human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, no legislative items, and this, Commissioner Rogers?
I mean, I just like note for the record, so some of the electeds and directors can note, I need to sit down with you to hash it through, but I probably need to work with you and Rick about a way to, I would like that like a monthly call with the federal group, to kind of get a coordinate, there's some things going on, I think we may be able to put more effort in, and I think we need to probably make a more coordinated effort, cause I know they're working on a couple of grants now, and I think there's a lot of things out there that may be eligible, so I, I like, probably need to sit down and form some structure on how to make that work good, and they can be on a conference call and make it work through, cause there's a couple of grants I know that's flowing through now that, if they'd have known, they probably could have put some more juice behind, so.
All right, good, thank you. And again, if there's legislative issues out there now, don't hesitate to bring them forward, so that we can start looking at them, because it's never too early to start, and we want to have a good package for our breakfast, lunch, or dinner, whatever we decide with the senators, which, what I would like to have staff do is contact our senators and ask them, do a, maybe just by email or whatever, but ask them what is the better time, because we've heard conflicting, one says dinner, one says lunch, one says breakfast, but let's kind of send out an email, or calls, or whatever, to our delegation and ask them what the majority would like, and so, and then we'll plan our November meeting to, to that, what they want. Okay?
Is it for sure it's November, then? I know Commissioner Morgan at one time said he thought it should be earlier in the year.
No, well, we did, we talked about that, but the senator said November would be better, cause it was closer to, it was closer to the start, but yet, early enough to have work done between then and January. We do have need for an executive session for contract negotiations and litigation. Per motion to go into executive-
Don't move.
Please vote. And no committee meetings after we're done.
Motion passes.[1184.41]